Now Tom's not here.
It's okay.
According, okay. Good afternoon. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Public Utilities Commission for Thursday, September 12th, 2024. Could you get in the pledge lead please?
Pledge lead, this is the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is Kelly not coming?
I thought he was coming, so I would have to share. I do have a little bit of a Trump day email from time.
Okay, public input.
Okay. Ladies, ladies and gentlemen. Everybody who's on the board, Tim Draper, third forty-eight, Aunt Patty's Lane, West Bethel. Um, I was at the, uh, there was a previous meeting, but probably the meeting before that. And we came to the board and just trying to get a feel of what the board was thinking about extending a sewer line at my cost from nine button up park up to the main on three oh two of fifty-eight. And, um, you know, some of the things that I heard were, you know, what, uh, where, you know, we'll look into it, you know, as the allocations are there, you know, if we offer it to one person, we have to offer it to somebody else. But my take on that part is I don't see any other developers in here with an open checkbook trying to make a problem go away that the town health department pretty much says there is a problem. So, and it's just not on my property and it's on multiple properties, um, according to the Bethel Health Department. So I just was, uh, here just to see if the board talked about it at all, um, or anything, you know, to that they hear any feedback, you know, so we know which way to go.
So, um, because it's public input, it's not really a place where we can have the dialogue over what we're doing. I can tell you that they, uh, we're still taking it under advisement, doing some research because that would involve extending the sewer area.
Yep.
Which is something that hasn't been done for quite some time. Um, but we're still kind of looking at that behind the scenes. Obviously our public works director is not here to do that. Excuse me. The utilities director is not here for the meeting today. Um, so we really can't comment on it in a public.
I understand. Is there, is there anything that the board would be looking from me as, as a builder developer, you know, to enlighten you guys with any information that you may not have?
That would come during the application, actual application phase. If we're going to do that, we'd be requiring information.
Sure, sure.
And then we'd be able to do it then.
All right. So I just kind of like, that's kind of, it wasn't, it wasn't a one and done thing. Because, you know, right now we, we have, we will be developing the property where we, we resubmitted a separate application. This is everybody knows what we've done. Uh, not, not a separate application where it's a modification of the application that was denied. And our denial, where I, I, as the applicant, I'm sitting on it right now, uh, instead of bringing suit against, you know, the, the appeal Superior Court against the town for denial of our application, our current application. So now we did a modified application, but this is still in the back of my mind to do it this way also. That's all.
Sure.
So me personally, I would rather do sewer there. It's just, it's something done one and done. And it's not just for me. And again, I want to reiterate this to the, to the commission and everybody who's listening. Yes, I'm going to benefit from it, but I'm also going to pay for it. And it's going to benefit all the other houses from nine good hill all the way up to fifty-eight, I'm sorry, to three oh two. And plus anybody that's down fifty-eight that I want to extend it up in the future. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear and everybody understood that. That's all. Okay? So that's why I stopped by here tonight, this afternoon, after meetings or anything. So back to the grind for this man. Thank you for your time.
Thanks for the thanks.
All right. I'll see you later.
Correspondents?
I don't know.
Okay. Uh, move we, uh, accept the meeting minutes from the regular meeting of August eighth, two thousand twenty-four. Okay. Any discussion? See none? I'll call your mind. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Yeah, motion carries. Financial report. Hello there.
Hello. Sorry, I can't be there in person today. We're dealing with sick kids.
How's she doing?
She, um, is positive for strep, so she is living the life. Um, financial report.
Okay.
Um, so both the water and sewer department right now are in a surplus position. Uh, water department to the tune of hundred and forty-one thousand, sewer three hundred and thirty-two thousand. Uh, they should be because last month was a billing month. Um, and if you look at the, uh, water department, the actuals changed by like six hundred and eighteen thousand dollars for water use and on sewer use, um, it changed by seven hundred and so thousand. Um, so they're both in a good spot. Um, Tom looked over the financial report before he, uh, stepped out of the office. Um, he did have one change of something that was booked to the wrong account, but I think otherwise everything looks pretty good. Um, I don't think there's anything out of whack at this point. Um, overtime is a little high, especially on the water department. Um, I know this first week of the bi-weekly payroll, they, one guy had fifty-four hours of overtime because there was a lot of stuff going on. Um, so obviously there's only so much they can do to control that depending on what's going on with the system. Um, but other than that, I didn't see anything that was crazy out of whack. I know the water main maintenance was high. Um, but I don't know if that's just because they had to buy equipment that's for the rest of the year. So, um, I don't, I think I heard that Kelly's not there right now.
He just came in.
All right. So I don't know. Kelly, do you know if you, for water main line maintenance, you guys had big purchases? And that's why we spent thirty-three thousand of the forty already, or is that something else?
You know what it was? It was a couple of weeks that got built out. Plus when we did Elgin, we had to buy a twelve inch valve, which was thirty-five hundred dollars. So yeah, then, uh, the finish off Elgin was, uh, I think it was fifteen thousand. So a lot of that was, you know, getting prepared for the painting. It's going to be done in the fall on the end of Elgin there. Um, and we did have, uh, we had one main break in the past. Yeah, it's the opinion hour, opinion player type of thing. I mean, yes, it was, it was high, but that, that Elgin thing turned into a lot more much. But it's more of a mess.
Gotcha. So, um, but other than that, I, I think we're in pretty good shape. Obviously it's only two months, so there's not a lot of data there.
Plus we had the main, I'm thinking now we have the main break gotten on midway. That was a big chunk of lot too. The second one was in this.
Oh, I was gonna say, was it in this one? Excellent. Thank you very much, Brad.
Thank you.
Let's see here.
Kovacs has asked for two hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Yep, that's what I'm seeing here.
I actually have a question. Uh, maybe you don't answer. Said there was, uh, two hundred and seven thousand dollars in change orders. Is that because of the tower wasn't working for the remote access, the fiber call, or these different change orders that we weren't aware of?
You know what? I'm not even sure. Uh, you're better ask, better off asking Tom on that because he's got a breakdown phone on it. You're talking about for the person job.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause I remember there was something where you guys thought you could use a tower, but you couldn't use that tower, which changed the price. But I don't think that was in change order because I thought it was before the final bid.
I, I think what you're talking about was for the ski assist.
Yeah, it's not for, yeah.
So, so, all right. So we don't know what these changes were.
I really don't. I don't even want to guess. I mean, I'm sure. But I, I don't have.
Anyone know what they were?
No, I would ask.
If you don't mind me ask, in the, in the breakdown, there is on page six, there is some things that say change order number one, change order number two, and if you have a brain.
Page six?
It's page six of the, of the invoice.
Oh, the C O's.
It says P C O's and it lists them out. It kind of gives a brief description of what they're for. And there's a continuation, I think, on the back as well.
You know, they have abandoned the test wells. Wouldn't you think that would have actually been in the contract?
Yeah, I suppose.
I had to jump out of it. It's not very much money.
I guess for the board, I mean, the only point, and if I missed a meeting where these were discussed, then it's on me. But we talked about the importance of letting us know about change orders. Cause you know, it might not seem a lot. It's about two percent of the project, a little bit more than two percent of the project. Almost three percent of the project's cost now, you know, was raised in change. And we had talked about this, that, you know, we wanted to keep aware of these things and, and, and the cost. And, and they may be very valid, which I'm sure they are, but you know, I know everyone was at the meeting where we discussed that and said, you know, we needed to be made aware. Because again, at the time, you know, you're saying there's an elevation discrepancy for the well pump, well, like defrost treatment piping for future use. Yeah, it makes sense. But, you know, we should know that because the more of these you do, as they kind of trickle on, you know, well, four thousand, not a big deal. Well, do that twenty times, you're at eighty thousand. So I don't know. Maybe you could talk to.
I'll talk to Tom. The other issues, you know, kind of going back and looking at our contract, for instance, with the H B A C content, we're going with the school. We're actually spelling out that we want pre-approval for change orders unless they're, you know, life threatening kinds of things. And I think it's the same thing we should maybe do here is talk about looking at the contract and.
Well, that's what we talked about last.
Yeah.
That we, we questioned that.
Yeah.
That's actually something to commission.
Well, what is W W P S? What does that stand for? W W wastewater? What is W W P S? They wanted to increase the depth three feet. I mean, is it wastewater purge system or something like that?
That's, that would be the pumping station for the sewage cell for the, for the waste going pumped out to the, to the street. So that would be a wastewater pump station and they have to pump the sewage or the, uh, the twenty percent of the spoil back out to the street. I'll get, uh, Will's.
But like that was twenty-two thousand. And I imagine that it was in the contract that it was their responsibility. And I imagine there was engineering elevation, all that stuff on the plant. So I guess, you know, it's just, it would be very interesting. And I know you can't answer and I'm not being antagonistic. But these are things that could have been brought to us so we could discuss, so we know. We talked about that, the hydrant modification we talked about.
Right. So we have Brad back up. We have. Okay. Uh, just for the record, we had a computer issue that took us down for a little bit. We're back up and running. All right. So, um, for the next meeting, I'll go back and look at, uh, at the dates of these change orders and then we can see when they were done. That would be a good idea to have on here.
If we approved it nine months ago, then we approved it.
Yes.
When you said the hydrogen, that hydrogen was early in the, they get, they need a foundation done.
Okay.
May, maybe we can, um, ask Tom to also maybe put a date of when these change orders occurred.
Sure. Okay. Um, so with that, I, I make a motion that we approve the invoices in the amount of two hundred and ninety-six thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars and seventy-six cents. Okay. Any further discussion? We talked a lot about the, the Kovacs.
But Ryan, on, on the Kovacs invoice, the original bid was nine million, nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
I read that. That's how we were trying to figure. Was this just one month's change, you know, orders, or does this from the start of the project? That's all. Cause if it was one month, that means that the original sum goes month to month. They would go back to the previous month.
Yeah.
If these are the total over the course of the year we've been involved in this project, then, you know, we've probably talked about some of them months ago and don't remember talking. I can't remember yesterday, the only ones of them. So that's all we were trying to figure out.
Yeah.
And I saw that.
Okay. Um, the continuation sheet with the document that actually provided to us from the vendor. We might have to ask them. So he might make a note or felt it on.
Okay, I already made it.
Same. Any further discussion on invoices? See, I'll try minds all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Uh, we do not have any new business. Anybody have anything you want to add to each other?
Do we have a bill from right here?
Yeah, we have. Yeah.
I saw we have one more bill to follow.
Well, I, I did the whole approval.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
All right, I got it. I thought you just approved that one.
Yeah, we did. We did the whole amount, but if, if there is, we can, we, okay.
Um, I had a question, but Tom's not here. Kelly, when we had the flood, our, how in your flood the other day, you know how high the water came up at the new building?
How high in the new building? Um, I, it, it was hard to tell when I got out there Monday morning, but the whole area was underground. I mean underwater.
I drove by during the flood. It was unbelievable.
The water, the water on the corner where you turn, either went to Park and Red, that far back, there was debris, probably a foot up the, uh.
The water looked like it would almost stretch. Remember they used to let people go pheasant hunting back there? Years ago, you know, cause I called Dan, remember I said, I hope the wells are okay. What's going on? Because to give you an idea how high the water is, that little red house, the water was to its front door. I mean, it was, the whole thing was underwater. So.
Well, it received it very fast.
It did. Oh, yeah. All over town it did.
It was right up to, you know, right, not, not in the building itself, but it was right up to the foundation and climbing. I mean, that, that was set up for the five hundred year flood. And we, we lifted, I think another three feet to accommodate a five hundred year flood. But, uh, I, I don't think the water got into the plant itself. Because I, I gone out there because you couldn't get there until, until Monday morning anyway. Um, and you could see water on the concrete, but that could have been for rain.
Yeah.
But I don't think it got that high. I, I would have to ask the, the guys from Kovac because I really don't.
Yeah. Well, it's, if you've mentioned it to Tom, because my concern is my original understanding that they were gonna, see all people were gonna put the transformers on poles down there. But now I see there's a wall down there. So the transformers looks like it's going to be on the ground. And you want it high enough that it's not going to be in, in a flood, you know, if we have a high water issue there. Yeah. So, all right. Uh, is Tom just not here today or is he on vacation?
He's just not here today and he's off tomorrow as well.
Okay, well.
I have a little bit.
So, so we'll get to the directors of work then. No more, no new business being added. So director's report.
No, that's, that's concerned I have.
It says director's report, wells one A and two A are meeting system demand and the rate of drawdown decline has lessened. Our sanitary survey inspection is conducted by D P H every three years and is scheduled for next month. Our lead and copper material inventory to be submitted to D P H is due next month. Those are the three for that. And then I have some for capital projects and P boss as well.
Okay. Do you happen to know, Kelly, where we stand on the lead and copper inventory? I mean, I know we've been doing it for some period of time.
He's, Tom's been working on, the guys have been taking pictures and, uh, doing a short sheet on every house they get into.
Okay.
Uh, it's due next month, so he is, uh, wrapped up.
Great. Uh, all right. So let's go through the whole business. First up, uh, we have a consideration of the acceptance of the sewer main and related easement and property Steiner Incorporated of Benedict Road and Field Stool Court, phase one. Chris, how are you? So we should have that. We have it in our, in our package.
I don't think it's in there. It was sent because of the.
Um, well, I'm, I'm aware that everything has been completed and that, uh, the attorney, our attorney has approved and everything seems to be all set. Um, is there anything else we know, need to know from your side that's effectively approval? Um, any questions from the board before we make a motion? We've been down this.
Who was the engineer firm that you checked the lines out? Sorry, who was the engineer firm that did the inspections?
Uh, Doug, Doug Besta is the one that, uh, that, that did all the engineering.
Good. He checked it out. Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Uh, we also know that the eight twenty-four came back from P and C was fine. So we're all set. So with that, I move that we accept the sewer main and related easement at the property starter incorporated, uh, the Benedict Road Field Stool Court, phase one. No second.
Second.
Are there any further discussion? Without fair minds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. It takes your patience. I mean, you guys have been working really hard on that.
That worked well.
All right.
Thank you very much, Jess.
Yeah. I don't know. We should change the whole thing around.
No, no.
But, um, yeah, we really could. Anyway, uh, M I U replacements.
Uh, right now I have a hundred and ninety-nine left. We, uh, got, uh, we're down to like fourteen. I got a hundred and twenty-three downtown. I have twelve pits left, which is real good because there, some of you can't even find.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there's thirty unreadables. What that means is the M I U's will change, but there's something more. Either be the head replaced or the wiring inside the building.
Okay.
So let's just get into those. And then I'm down to only twenty-four in Stony Hill. So we're, uh, we're moving along. We also have, um, you know, a lot of coffee free digs and because the bills went out, high consumptions, things like that, that, that before, you know, we have to go out and investigate.
Okay. One, one thing we haven't talked about is more with our second M I U replacements is where our goal may be with, you know, a, 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 a measured goal of saying we want no more than, I don't know, fifty or more than, because we've talked about this at length, how unfair it is to consumers or residents, seemingly our customers, to go out and have this go on for a long period of time.
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, in my case, I got a, you know, twenty something hundred dollar bill, which would have made the usage, you know, through the roof. And this quarter, the usage was a hundred and twenty dollars. I mean, something just doesn't, you know, when you're going over three, four year timeframe, you know, how do we know what the right usage was? And, you know, I, and again, this isn't a knock on anyone. I don't think it's acceptable to allow one of these things to be down for four or five years. It's just, there's no reason for it.
I agree.
I mean, it was on the outside of the house and they had called me in the past or something saying, you know, can we change it? Yeah, go ahead and change it. I don't care. I just think that that's not, it's not fair to our residents, you know, that.
Right. That's fair. Well, you don't, you don't get compensated for.
What do you mean you don't get compensated?
And if, if, if you're gonna estimate a bill for, for two years or three years, and all of a sudden you, you get a meter space and the bill was in three hundred and fifty dollars a quarter, it's two hundred dollars.
The amount was a hundred and twenty.
I know. Yeah.
Paid like it was.
I think around two is.
I understand.
Reunite people. Yeah.
It, it just, I just think it's, it's fair for the resident. So, you know, a lot of people work on a monthly budget, right? And then you get a fifteen hundred dollar bill you weren't expecting. That's a big deal. And again, if, you know, we're almost there, you know, I would almost prefer to see a timeframe.
That's what I was just saying.
Yeah, these things can't be down for more than six months, eight months, you know.
Should be that long? I mean, Kelly, what do you think? Like, you know, if we got down to zero and then we're looking at it, you know, M I U by M I U.
Right. You, you know, with somebody being changed, I think a reasonable number would probably be fifty.
What if we gave a time, but what if we give a timeframe to the, like if a customer.
Six months would probably be a good timeframe. But you know what? You know what is really what a lot of these ones that are left, people are working all day.
Sure.
You know what I mean? And they don't even have the chance to call in. When they're outside, I'm fine. But I think it's just the days of mom being home and being able to say, okay, you can get in. They, they're gone. You know, it's just everybody's working. But I, I think, I think a workable time, it would be six months. That means two buildings.
Yeah, two buildings.
You know, I, I think that's reasonable.
Okay. So, so when we, when we have the full group, let's talk about that on the next agenda and actually vote on it. Get, get you involved in saying that could be what we said is a metric.
As a goal.
That is our goal. I, I mean, we could do it informally now. We can say our goal is six months, but.
Again, how long do you really think it's going to take to get these all done? You have fifty, fifty left?
They have a hundred.
I'm not making excuses, but like the past two, two months, we've been so busy with all of this other crap going on, uh, between problems at the wells, problems at Wall Street. My mechanics are working on those items. I've got one guy going out and doing.
Does it, does it make sense to have the same contractor that used to finish up? So, so we're, so we're done?
I, I would ask you to wait until winter time, see how we make out by, by the end of the year. And then I can get somebody like Tommy Kane to come in and because it's an off season for him. You know, and, and that worked out very well for us. But let me see how far we can get by, let's say Christmas. He'll be done with all this wall cleanups and what have you. And, and if we need to bring somebody in, we will. But, uh, like I said, that, that's a problem with a lot of these now. They're not calling in to make appointments because they're not around. Um, I've asked the girls to make some calls. Of course we, you know, we stop at them, but if nobody's there, nobody's there. Um, the majority of them, you'd either get, get into the basement or their, their pits. And, and the pit thing now is the time of year we're doing it. We're, we're doing good on the pits. But I would say if, if you could give, give me until winter time and then, uh, then I'll see Tommy's guys. Because they're, they're gonna have the same situation. If we don't have appointments, then we're paying them for doing nothing.
Have we sent certified letters?
Yes, we have.
And they were all, they were, they were just ignored.
Yeah. Usually every quarter we, we try to do the letters. Um, like I say, I just gave a, uh, endless to Brittany and Brittany's calling on that to, to set up an appointment. Because when we had the appointments, it was working five. I mean, we would do seven, eight, well, not eight, we did seven a day. Uh, which worked out very well because we gave them, gave an hour between meters. So if we ran into a problem, we did, we could get to it. But like I say, right now I've got one guy doing, doing the, uh, the, uh, M I U's.
And his average rank, how many is that?
Two or three, maybe four. It was his other orders and his quality for the takes.
Which, which?
Chris.
Okay.
I'll call him. Now what kills me with the quality for the takes, they're on telephone calls. And they, they put them in every month. It'll start in April and they keep putting them in every month until the snow flies. Until they get to, you know. Uh, and you gotta give them more, you gotta give them some kind of a mark, no matter what, even if it's out of our district, we gotta give them a mark. That, that's what sticks.
Um, the other issue, I mean, I guess we can bring it up, but, uh, I know names, but we were losing one guy soon, right?
Yeah, that's what I wanted to talk to you about. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. We got two weeks notice from somebody. So we'll be looking higher here pretty soon on the water side.
So I kind of focused back to where I was in the springtime. Um, but it, I, I gotta tell you, our latest hire, Chris, um, Luca, he's awesome. Between him and Santos, they have put back one of our hundred horse pumps, upholstery, put it back together. Where I would have, before they were here, I would have depended on Kovacs coming in. Um, they've done some changes with some floats and some of the other stations. The two of them are very mechanically inclined and they don't put the book down until they got it figured out. And we, of course, we, we lost, uh, Eric, Eric gave me notice last night. He called me about seven o'clock. He's taking a job in Derby. Of course he lives in Chellon. He's taking a job in Derby. Of course, he lives in Chelan. Uh, I kind of stole him from Derby, because I'm on the WPCA Derby. And I had asked the superintendent there, I said, you got any anybody you could recommend, because I know he teaches. Uh, and he gave me Eric. Eric worked out great for a month, for a year, excuse me. But he just wants to get closer to home and he wants to be in the lab at the sewer treatment plant in Derby, so we lost. And he was, he was perfect backup for for uh Justin. So we're back to ground zero now. Uh, he just put a year in so he could get certification for treatment. Awesome.
Okay. All right, any other semi-replacements?
Yeah, has anybody, I think I got a question. Has anybody, has Church come to research the wells or anything?
Uh, they're they're supposed to do it in the fall. We didn't want to take the chance in the summer excuse me, being down with with the the new well, well number one. Because to uh put the chemical into one, we couldn't run, or into one A, we couldn't run well one uh for like twenty four, forty eight hours, whatever comes out the bay. So once our our usage is dropping, they they really got a good handle on it. Uh, uh, you know, keeping the drawdown, the drawdown is decreasing a little bit, well, um, I'm pretty sure Tom's got something for this wall lined up with that. But but that's, you know, that's the problem. That one is dropping down.
But I don't understand it with the with the wells that we had down there, they never made it capable of interconnecting, you know what I'm saying, in case you needed another another well. They were saying because of the check valve, it would back feed or something?
No, I think it had a lot to do with the plumbing, especially in the back there, because it all comes through that one line, two and two A.
Yeah.
Feed through that one line up to the feed plant. It was never separated. Uh, know what I mean? With the with the chemical feed plant, we could use one or one A.
Right.
Uh, because it was right in the same building and it had its separate plumbing. But it was never plumped with two separate lines from the two wells in the back well. I don't know whether I'm explaining that right or not.
No, I understand it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but so there actually are other ones you can't use.
Well, you you can use the two.
Right.
But you can't get two and two A together.
Right.
Because of the way it's plumb, because because two, two A, I know two A comes out, goes into uh to the uh pump house in the back, as well as for two, two, and then it it comes to the treatment plant.
Yeah.
You're you're right. If there was two lines, we would be able to do that, but uh, it it was just never done.
Would it be something in the future to look at?
I think you're gonna find, Pete, that probably it need, we need a new building. We we need a whole bunch yet.
Yeah, that building's gotta go anyways.
Yeah. And I I think you're gonna find, I mean, the generator is still inside the building. Uh, I I think he, there's some serious revamping that has to be done. You know, in the future, once we get Bergstrom.
Yeah.
Once we give these wells a a break, I think we'll be in robust shape.
Makes more sense to do it that way, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Just right here, because you'll have the capacity.
Yeah. And and while we're on the same subject, that I think we really should consider doing something with Danbury over there at uh uh Timber Oaks, doing some kind of a uh connection in there. I mean, it's set up, it's only
We talked about that a long time ago.
Pardon me?
We talked about that a long
We did, and and when I first came in two thousand five, they were just working on that project and it was set up. There's two stub lines
Reverse meter.
In the first driveway.
Yeah.
Reverse meter. The only thing is, I think you have about fifteen pound difference between their system and ours, so so we'd have to set up some sort of an outlet.
Yeah.
But that that is something that, you know, I don't know whether it's gonna be why I'm still here, but I think it is something that should be considered doing another brush connection.
Okay, yeah, do you have anything on the on the capital? Project summary? Anything, I mean, we're on track, anything?
No, he just said Bergstrom well, metal building structure is being erected, building siding, exterior wall air area, and a rough framing around the basing room, openings is continuing, interior concrete equipment pads have been poured. Uh, EverSource Electric has been on to the site and is preparing to install the new utility poles. The delivery of the motor control center is delayed until November and will be delayed to the substantial completion date, will delay the substantial completion date into the late winter or spring of twenty twenty five. And then the last thing would be the PPOS class action, and he just said our claim forms have were recently reviewed and two deficiencies were identified. Corrections that have been made and claim forms have been resubmitted in our hundred.
Okay.
Kathy, what was the completion date?
Uh, completion date into the late spring, late winter or spring of twenty twenty five.
Late winter or spring?
Yes.
And what was it? Because again, it was the, the weight on the electric controls?
The delivery of the motor control center. I remember I had a
Yep, utility supervisor.
Um, few things in the past month. Of course, we had uh we, the midway issue there, we uh uh uh, Tinker is, they were scheduled to come two weeks ago. They said they couldn't get the parts. I don't know, but they said they couldn't get the parts. They're coming next Monday and they're gonna come in, do it, and finish it. They're gonna uh, they're gonna go about um it's it's about eighty feet of the eight inch going in midway, and then this, the branch that goes in the south, and they're gonna add two valves. So it it just gives us one more. I I I don't like the guys out in the middle of three or two shutting down the valves. So we're gonna put one right at south, at uh
And it's like short.
Short, yeah, right in short, so we can shut the loop down there if if we are at no issue.
And you're doing the first part of the loop, right? Is the the first part of the loop is what you're gonna do?
Well, it's before you get to the loop. It's it's right um in that section. They they say the thing that when that pipe got installed, with with the with the transite, they use the couplings to get bends when they install it.
Right.
And they put stress on the couplings. So that's why we think there's stress in there. That's why that whole little section, we at least want to get ductile iron in there, something that because we've got two breaks five feet apart in there.
Right.
So we wanna, we wanna, what they're gonna do is they're gonna come in, they're gonna lay it right next to the transite, and then one day shut down and tie it back in at all three points, going into shore, going up midway, and then back through three.
Okay, so the whole intersection will be
That one intersection.
Okay.
That's gonna be a very difficult job to do if we ever decide to do away with the transite main. It's good, it's gonna take some thought, because it's only one feet.
Yeah.
You know, if we had another feet that came down from from uh uh Woods Hill, it would be different, but right now that section of Woods Hill is on a separate uh zone, because it goes through the uh the uh Woods Hill Pump Station and then comes back down. So it it's, it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna take some thought. We're gonna have to be on temporarys here, which is very pricey. Uh, I think we've, believe it or not, I think there's sixty, we have sixty or seventy units in there. So it's sixty or seventy units.
Yeah.
It's almost a half a mile of water, I mean. Um, let's see. We have sewer relief, the nine of the flood at ninety eight Milwaukee that got taken care of first thing in the morning. Um, sewer main back on four, sewer sewer main backup on forty Nashville, which I would contribute to the flood, because all of Nashville was on water. So I think a lot got in there uh and stirred it up and it plugs up where it always plugs up right there by the little car. Uh, so that need punched open. Uh, the wells having some issue. We were having issues. They got it all sorted out now. The automatic feed for the chlorine, they were having a hard time getting into dialing. They kept on getting air bombs, so they worked on that. And of course, that was right after the flood too, so it was a busy week. I mean, the guys were humping. Um, Wall Street, we had an issue with, well, first off, Wall Street, the new pump that was ordered like three or four weeks ago, that's gonna be the number one pump. Um, they're saying mid-November. We asked them if they could expedite it in any way because we have problems with number three. This sounded, this sounds screwy, but we don't know whether it was because the check uh check valve or what, but the bolt that holds the impeller to the shaft of the motor loosened up. It dropped the bolt, it dropped the washer, dropped the uh keyway, and thi- this pump at sixty Hertz was only pumping like two or three hundred gallons a minute, and then it got to the point where it wasn't pumped at all. So the impeller actually fell off the shaft. Called Kovacs to come out. They took a look at it. This is where I say our two guys, they were Santos and Chris, they they looked at it, they looked at it, they found a manual, they found its uh technical spec. He said, we could do this. And they, within an hour, they had, they lifted the pump up, they put the key in, they and and it's pumping, it's pumping eight, nine hundred gallons a minute now. So we, when I called Wanda, she said, this is the first time I've ever gotten a call from you and it says emergency diverted, and the guys fixed it. And we never had the ability to fix these things before, because we didn't have the the guys that knew how to do it. They banged it out. Um, I I'm real impressed with the with the crew that we're starting up, but I I'm really, I'm depressed about losing Eric, because we really had a good young team there. And uh, hopefully we could, when when Eric leaves, we replace with somebody with the same knowledge, you know, I hope. But uh, the the guys have been humping, and and as for when Brad had said about the fifty four hours overtime, that was also two weekends that they were doing sewer routes, so that's eighteen hours right out of that. So just, you know, just so you know, it it wasn't like it it's it sounded. I mean, yes, he did get paid that much money, but it was also, those were his two weekends that he was working. Other than that, that's where we're at.
How how did Wall Street survive the flood?
Um, it didn't, it didn't bypass, but it was probably six feet from the from the hatch. It it was up, everything was submerged.
Hmm.
Uh, uh, one of the uh, one of the seals started leak on one of the pumps, but we we
How was, how's their generator? Was the generator underwater out there?
Underwater, no, no, no. It it was, I mean, you had to wear boots to to get in there.
Yeah.
That that little broom was even with the the back steps of it. But uh, no, we we did not, you, um, I'm sorry, Berkshire. I think Berkshire was the only place that the generator ran during the flood, but other than that, we survived. No issues, no, no well issues, no flooding issues. Uh, the worst part of the whole flood is me trying to find a way to get to get to work, because everything down, you know, down my way is washed out.
You mentioned Nashville.
Yeah.
Um, any any money that you spent on that repair, would you please kind of earmark it, because once a major disaster is declared, we may have opportunities to get some of that back.
All right.
FEMA's been out and about.
This pepper pumped uh took care of it. It was on a Sunday afternoon.
So that cost may be reimbursable.
Okay.
Possible.
All right, that's all for Tommy about it.
Right, thanks. Any questions?
Do you like that?
Okay. So next up is uh Brian Church's favorite topic. I'd like to second that. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Thanks, Kathy.